Dollar amount already, that that was a section of code, that does not apply here.
There is an attorney, there is an attorney that would shred that to bits.
Have you asked any attorneys about this? How long for anyone? I don't have concerns.
I don't have to, I know, I know how the laws work, how attorneys work, but there is a contract. And I'll get, and I'll show you, we would get sued if something happened drastically or somebody dying with some, with somebody. Uh, with minimum training.
Well, another part of that too, sorry to interrupt, another part of that too is, and this has been clarified by the Lieutenant Governor that. These people we recruit are protected by the Good Samaritan law, I agree with what Kyle says one hundred percent. But nowhere does it say in that law that they cannot be brought, litigation brought against them. They will have to pay for their own defense out of their own pocket, there is no insurance to cover them for that defense. Yes, they may win the case based on the Good Samaritan law, that still does not limit them from having a legal obligation. Or financial obligation to pay for legal defense if something's brought against them. It's more than just A E D, we may only have an A E V D provided in these bags. But there's more than that, there's more cases that they're gonna arrive on scene than just a A E D case. Where they may perform something that causes further damage. Yes, they're protected by the Good Samaritan law, but they're not protected from having a legal allegation brought against them. That was also brought up to Lieutenant Governor when we had a conference call with him. His response back to me was, to Kyle and me was. You can get sued anytime you walk out of your house, what's the difference? The difference is, we're training these people as county. We are recruiting these people as county. We're asking them to do something per page they're receiving from a county system to respond. The county will be brought to legal action if something happens, I truly believe that.
As I said, look at all the lawsuits that are brought against drivers, you have. And I, I guess the other thing is, is again, we, we have protocol as a board. And we, we put these things on the agenda, we've already discussed it, we voted on it. And now it comes back again, how many more times is it gonna come up? I mean, we could take this entire agenda, if one person on the board doesn't agree. And wants to put it on, we could go and put every one of these agendas on every week and come the end of the year, we have fifty-two agendas and we could hash them all over again. We have, we have pro- we have protocol Kyle, and you don't seem to understand.
What, what about the next item that you put on?
Yes, there's, that's a different, that's a different issue. Again, we have protocol, that, somebody took it upon themselves and, and that issue, we'll talk about when we get it, we're not, we're not there yet. We'll ta- I'll, I'll give you my reasons for that one, we'll get to it, this one we have to take care of first.
So, well, obviously liability is one thing, but at the end of the day. Um, one of the things Phil had said while we were on the conference call is. It, it'd be, um, something we'd need to look into as far as whether they could be, these volunteers could be included on our. Insurance for liability coverage. And all the volunteer E M Ts and drivers for the cities are all on their city's insurance coverage. I haven't looked into the prices there, but I'm, from what I know, it's not that expensive to add someone for liability coverage. And at the bare minimum, my point of this is. If we do the pre-application, it gives us two months to get more information and make a more informed decision. So, if there's questions that can't be answered, that's the whole point of doing the pre-application. And allowing more time to have solid answers.
Well, there's other reason, one reason, first of all, you know, the, uh, somebody has to do the training, these people. Then all this equipment has to be purchased, and then it has to be retrained, it's gonna be a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars at the beginning of time. And we don't even know, we have enough money to give the raises that we're gonna be looking at.
Why, why do you assume?
Still trying, and we're still trying to get the, the, uh, a brand new. Ambulance service off the ground and running, we, we're just in its infancy yet, and then to throw another, and that's some more stuff in there. And then we have every police officer, every, uh, deputy sheriff, most towns already have first responders. We could, uh, Phil referred to that about how many first responders there are. So it isn't like we don't have people in the county doing this already. But to take this and throw this on the back of, of, uh, uh, emergency management, uh, another piece of the pie, I just don't think. We need, we should do that to fill this time, and there's so many things we're trying to get finished up on the, on a brand new system. That's just, you know, it's infancy yet.
Why, why do you assume tax dollars have to go into this?
Well, it's twenty-five thousand dollars has to come from somewhere.
Local contribution, do you not think any businesses would participate in this?
I don't know.
Have you done any research?
Have you?
Have you talked to anyone? Yeah, I have. I, I don't have a check in hand, but I've had many conversations.
You asked me about giving names here a week ago, and I gave you a name, so give me the names of the companies that have already told you are gonna donate. You're, you're good about always getting somebody else to give you a name, but when we ask you for a name of somebody, you say, well, I'm not gonna give out a name.
If, if we're not gonna do the pre-application, why would anyone's name be out there?
You just said, you talked to people, you've got, you also you've got.
Yeah, let's, let's stop the argument, go ahead, Carter.
You two aren't gonna get anywhere talking to each other here, um, just, but, uh, what, what we need to look at is. This is the pre-application. And two weeks ago, when Phil came to the board, and we discussed this. I mean, I was, and I was the end for the public, I was the only one that was not at Lieutenant Governor's presentation. And nor did I read through the slides or, or anything in regards to the program. I did not have very much information about program two weeks ago, and I made the decision based, my, my vote was based on the fact that. We're, we would need someone to run the program. And we have some issues with, Phil is, has a lot on his plate, and. So that, that is the main issue for me, the liability, I, I don't think the governor would present a program. That would endanger the liability of citizens, I think there, there's definitely some ways, and I, I have to call people and look into that, but this is the pre-applications. I, I think it's a wonderful program, I do, I, I think it's an excellent program, and I'd like to see it happen, but. But we need someone to be willing to spearhead it and run it. I do also believe, after talking to folks outside the county and inside the county, that I'm not worried about the twenty-five thousand dollars. And it, it does not have to come from tax money, and I, I understand that, um, I, I, I made a lot, I spent all day yesterday on phone, so. I guess, in order for me to, uh, to wanna move forward with this, we need someone to be able to. To spearhead it and run it, and I don't think Phil is in a place to do that at the moment, would that be correct, Phil?
I don't know how I can get it done by.
So, it was suggested.
On page six of this information that I presented you guys, on page six. It says the ultimate uses of the funding from the grant money that's received, and one item, it says personnel's time dedicated to this project. I don't hire somebody.
What, what is the time requirement for, for filling out the pre-application, what does that all entail? Because we're not, we're not committed, but what, what does that entail for personnel to complete the pre-application to look into the program? I'm not saying we have to, but just so that the public has the information, and we have the information.
It's a grant, Philo, it's a, it's a state grant. So, you just complete the pre-application within the state grant.
I mean, are we? Phil, have, have you already started that? Okay, 'cause I had asked Morgan, um, what time requirements would be or whatever, and she said. She was told there's already one started in the system, so would that?
I wanted to research to see what time was involved in actually completing the pre-application, if that's the direction it went.
How close are you to having?
I only, I only opened it, I only, I only logged in, opened it up, and skimmed through the pages. So, it's more, it's more detailed than just saying, yes, I'm interested in applying, um, it is a little more detailed than that. I would say a couple hours.
Okay.
Then another piece of this puzzle is, we have no clue what the future cost would be, uh, for, for, uh, the equipment. To add this to dispatch, we don't, we have no clue, sure, they're saying there's people gonna donate, but.
That's, that's part of the investigation period, and we just have to pre-app to get into that investigation period.
We are not agreeing to anything, I understand that. But do we want to spend a couple hours to look into the program, is it worth looking into? Does not mean we have to do it, I, I understand that more now. But, okay, if Phil does not have the time to, to do the pre-application. Do we have someone that is. Willing to do that?
To that point, um, I would say. This, this probably should have gone through the EMS board originally, after being presented by the governor. In the code with the essential service, the EMS board is supposed to make recommendations to the board supervisors. I, I think this should easily and definitely should go in front of the EMS board. And that would be, would be something that could be addressed, I. I think there's options in that regard, if, if hiring someone through the grant to manage it is a possibility. The pre-application would give us time to look into that and handle that if necessary, but.
Then who, who's gonna pay, who's gonna pay those wages when the grant's done? That's part of.
That's part of research.
I, I guess it doesn't hurt to look into the program, is what I'm saying.
Why not let, do we, why not let a couple other communities or counties do, do, be the game things, I guess first. Down the road, if they, if it works, the state's gonna open it up to, to more counties and more communities.
Was, was that your intention from the needs assessment in two thousand seven that went unattended until twenty nineteen?
It didn't go unattended, we backfilled the city, they all going on ambulance funds, and if we.
There was one paramedic paid until.
We did backfill them.
Until discussions started happening.
That paid for a lot more than a paramedic, Mr. Sticker.
Worked on this for several years, and that's why we, we decided to go to the essential service, it wasn't, we, we had been concerned about it. But it's, it's.
So to that, to that point, then you have a essential service vote that just passed. And this is a program that's just getting started. One of the concerns I heard all the time from people that voted for it and people that voted against it is. Not driving out the volunteers that we currently have. This, to me, looks like something that would fit this pro, the system we have designed already. Would fit with it very well and would help keep those people engaged. And for people in the rural areas, I mean, maybe doesn't apply as much to Algonah. But outside of Algonah, you're not guaranteed a response in five minutes. So if someone's having a heart attack, seconds are critical, and that's the purpose of this program. If you can save one life, it's worth it. So, I, I mean.
I'm not, I'm not against the program, but I'd like somebody else to be the guinea pig and do it first. I don't know that we wanna be the county that takes it on and tries to make it work unless we really have a.
I would rather focus our time on the current EMS.
So why did, why did we push so hard to get the EMS essential service vote on the ballot this last fall? What was, what was the urgency there?
Because, because with the, the entire EMS system was in a quite, we had. Uh, towns that, that weren't able to buy ambulances anymore, we, we had people, some towns that had, had people, and didn't have people. We had communities that couldn't put, uh, that weren't getting, you know, didn't have people to, to, uh, run the ambulance, wanna call them. So we, we decided, we, we thought, we really knew that we needed to have a full-time service, so we had people on call twenty-four seven. That would answer calls in a more timely fashion and, 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 uh, making an essential service to, to. Serve the, the needs of the people more efficiently.
You, you just made my point, we've got areas in this county that are underserved.
But that's what we're, that's, that's what we're trying to address.
Yeah, my point is, is are we gonna get any volunteers to do it, Phil?
I.
I mean, we can pass this program, but unless we have people that volunteer to do this, it's worthless.
Well, we're not passing the program right now, we're, now we're, we're doing the pre-app, to do the investigation period, during that investigation period. We can look at who's gonna volunteer.
We're not getting people to volunteer right now in small towns.
But that's because of the heavy burden that's placed on them, you have people that are very intelligent. That know all the skills, but that can't pass the E M T test.
That's a contradiction of terms, if they're very intelligent and everything else and can't pass the test.
Not really, I mean, there's.
Depends on level, so there's, there's E M Rs, which is an emergency medical responder. Uh, may have less training requirements than an E M T, then there's advanced E M T and there's paramedic, so depending on what.
So E M R would train to do that?
Um, E M R is. Three months.
Less is an E M R.
Less is a B M R, that's my lieutenant, we don't, we don't have a lot of E M R classes. Because they're so limited on the things they can do. This program here, these people that we recruit here will have even less limit, have less abilities than an E M R. So, probably three, four months of, of classes, E M T is about six months, it's based on hours. I don't look up the exact hour, but a class normally runs, they run by college semester, so they try to do one in the fall semester, one in the spring semester. That's how they run their classes, E M R class gets done a month sooner than an E M T class would.
But that's, that's the point of this program, is to get people in at a lower requirement for training. A lower requirement for the actual time on the scene, they can't, if say, say a call comes in. A mile down the road from my place, I go that mile, help on scene till the ambulance arrives, do whatever I can in the moment. And then the ambulance picks them up and takes them off, and I go back home. It's a lower, lower burden for education, a lower burden for each call. And the purpose is to try and help your friends and neighbors, and your community as a whole, so. I mean.
That's exactly what we're addressing by, with the essential services that, that we have in place right now.
We, we can't solve that.
Responders and all the police officers and, and state and deputies that are all first responders.
As I stated two weeks ago, I think this program does have merit, I think it does have some, some possibility of, of being okay. I'm, I'm just gonna say okay, because my concern with that statement is. We're only providing these people with enough education to carry a D F I B basically. Um, there's gonna be a lot of seats they're gonna ride on and not be able to provide a care, uh, that a person maybe have an medical emergency with. But that's beside the point, it's still providing some sort of care right away, so it does have some merit in this county in the future. I am very concerned about the liability portion, I'm also very concerned with the ability to have time to do this program and train these people. If you read through this information that I put in your, in your packet. And you read through all the requirements that's involved in this, in this pilot program, and they're quite intense, uh, what has to be done. It's gonna be a huge time commitment, it's not gonna be an hour a week, it's, it's gonna be a huge time commitment, there's, there's quarterly reports, there's. There's matrices we have to develop, it's, it's, there's nothing in place for us to follow, we have to develop these for other counties in the state. That's my big concern is.
And there's, and there's a lot of situations where these people wouldn't be able to do anything, yeah, I mean.
And I, I understand where Kyle's coming from, saying this is just a pre-app. Gives us two months to do research, I get that part of it. I plan that I'm taking yesterday and today off, 'cause I have forty-eight hours of vacation, I lose tomorrow. I was here till ten thirty last night, and I'll be here till who knows tonight. I have medical revalidation, I don't even know how I can get the pre-app done today, I really don't.
Phil, I got one question, in your opinion, no, I think this is a great program, but. How much, how many times would somebody that's not trained go to an emergency and actually do something good?
If it's cardiac arrest.
That's about it?
Pretty much. Because we don't have the equipment, so if we have a child that has a allergic reaction and they go into a flight shock. We can do nothing except sit there and say, I have a D F I B, when you die, I'll try to shock you, I mean, we don't have the tools to treat these people. Which is unfortunate. But, but time is critical in the event of cardiac arrest. You know, minutes is, is muscle, you know, it's, it's, it is important, so there's some benefits there into these. Laverne area, these outside areas that have no response until we can get there with A L S.
So how many ambulance, or how many calls would actually, the ambulances like in Tyke and Lakota, they get, how many calls a year now?
In Tyke?
Yeah. Other than the care center?
Thirty.
La- Lakota, do they get a handful, I mean, do they get that?
Yeah, probably twenty.
Twenty, so there would be that many times that somebody would go before the ambulance got there, is that, is that object?
If they're available, they would, you know, they have an, they'll have an app on their tele, on their phone, on their cell phone, have an app. They can click on the app that says I'm available during these hours. So dispatch will see that, and if there's somebody available during that, when a call comes in, if there's somebody available within a five-mile circle or whatever we. For a circle, that person will be dispatched to that scene. But if they choose not to be available during that time, we still may not have anybody respond.
So, every community would need a handful of five or more volunteers to actually make it work? This is my, I don't wanna start a program and have it fail completely.
I mean, you'd, you'd wanna have at least two or three in each community to start with, to make sure that you had. Somebody to respond and see what the benefits of the program really were.
So is this gonna take away from the volunteers that we now have in the ambulance system?
Anytime you do a change, it's always a concern what's gonna happen to volunteers, just like we do full-time staff. Full-time staff is very hard on, on volunteers because they've done it for so many years. You've been a volunteer for twenty, thirty years, and now you see somebody that's there that's gonna actually relieve me, they step down. They've been looking for an out for the past five years, and they, they find. Could this also do that effect, it's possible, they can say, oh, now I have somebody else that's willing to be that first responder, I don't have to do it, and, and step out. Or it could get them excited to have more help and.
And this is the one, one-time money, this year only?
The grant program?
Right.
Yes, and actually, if you read the grant program, some of the dollars are held back until next fiscal year. So some of this money's gonna have to come out of somebody's budget upfront, and then we'll get reimbursed next year after we do the final, um, grant paperwork.
It said, it said it was on a reimbursement basis, but I didn't see next, what do you mean, next fiscal year?
We took on a big, big program, and we made EMS and essential services, and I, and I just. Think we need to put all of our time and effort and people we have hired to, to get that. Up and running and working efficiently and down the road a year or so from now. We could take another look at something like this, but as of today, I'm just not in favor of putting our personnel. Pulling them off of the program that's just in its infancy, that we need to, that we need to make sure it's a success. And, uh, it may be a pilot program for the rest of the state. And I, for one, just think we need to let our personnel focus on what we're doing right now.
Did anybody change their mind from their opinion before?
I, uh, you know, just coming from a standpoint of living in the Laverne area. Where we don't have a response crew, um, and. The, the EMS levy that we passed doesn't fix the issue of volunteers, it doesn't. And everyone's struggling with volunteers, I get that too, but, I mean, just to have two or three people. That can respond in the Laverne area, I, I think that is a wonderful idea. And whether we can make that work, I don't know, at some point in our, in our future, we're gonna have to do something. And whether it's right now, or whether it's in the future, we're gonna have to do something to, to work towards that.
And, and this is, and this was presented as a community or a county, so, and you're on, you're on the board of Laverne. Why don't you take it to your, to your, uh, city and say, why don't we, why don't you apply a board application?
And that's another discussion, I mean, we're talking about the county.
But, but the, the point, or to follow up with what you just said there, Carter. The areas in this county, Laverne would be an example, that have little or no response, would be the ones that would immensely benefit from this. Laverne is not going to get anyone there faster with the essential service vote that passed, because they're already coming from Algonah. We've, we've had full-time staff in Algonah, they're already coming from Algonah with an ambulance. So, to get a tangible benefit to areas that currently don't have coverage in that regard. You need something outside the box, and this, this has potential beyond saving someone's life in a heart attack. That's obviously great, and the main point, but this could be a training tool, you can develop, if you have. Say you have thirty people that are, um, part of this program. If ten percent of them say, hey, I have an interest in this and I wanna go on. There, there's your pipeline of talent for the future, for when people retire, when people are sick, you've got people you could maybe call on. Maybe they get excited and wanna become an E M T or a paramedic down the road, it's. It would be a way to tie the communities back into a system that is designed to be full-time right now.
I don't think nobody's changing anybody's mind, I call for a question, would you do a roll call vote, please?
There hasn't been a motion.
We haven't had a motion, one more.
Oh, get a motion on the floor.
One last thing, um.
We're having a lot of discussion, a lot of motion.
All right, I, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion.
You can ask.
Again, I'm gonna make a motion that we not, uh, apply for this at this time.
Plath makes a motion not to apply. I'll second his motion, and now we have legal discussion.
To, you know, just when I first looked at it, I got back from vacation, looked at the agenda, I was, I didn't under, you understand why it was on the agenda again, 'cause we did vote on it. Like I said, I did not have a lot of information, I, after talking with other counties, talking with a number of. Probably six or seven residents yesterday that are related to this issue in county who would have concerns related to it. I, I see the benefit of the program, we just, we need to know who is going to be in charge. And being Phil is not, I don't believe Phil is the one to be in charge of it, because he has enough other stuff on his plate, and so. That, that is my concern, I, I, I'm not opposed to moving forward with the pre-application and looking into it. But we need to know who's going to be in charge of it.
And, and to follow that up, I, I understand Phil's concerns with the timeframe and all that, and I, I don't dismiss that. I agree, we need to have answers to who's gonna manage it and answers to other questions, but I.
You're rehashing everything again, Kyle.
I feel it deserves an answer, investigation.
You're rehashing everything again, we gotta move forward.
I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but what do you think as far as, within your. Within your qualification, within your job, I mean, do you feel this is something you would?
No, I don't have time, I have a mannequin that I have to put together, plus the commission has to approve it, because that's different monies, I can't use my money.
We can't, we can't assess it through our commission.
I, for one, don't think we need to be thinking about hiring.
Well, two months would give us time to get an answer to that.
And I don't have time to help do that pre-app either, I got a meeting tomorrow and.
Phil, is Phil for the pre-app, is that something you had to create an account for to log in and all that?
You know, I just had to go ahead, you can register.
Okay, well, I, I will do that if that's the holdup as far as the paperwork for the pre-app.
We have a motion on the floor. Do it all.
Uh, Plath?
The motion is not to.
Yeah, well, well, yes, not to apply.
Not?
I'll pass.
Blacker?
No.
Sticker?
No.
Jarks?
I'll pass, and let Carter vote.
Carter, do you wanna vote again?
My question never answered. No.
Jarks, did you?
Yes.
I, I still would like the question answered. Is there anyone within the county that can run the program? And if not, then. We can, we can vote to do the program, but if there's nobody to run it, then it's not, we'll, we'll have to look into it in the future. And that's, that's my opinion. Is there anyone else in the emergency medical services department? Within the county here that, that can run the program?
A three-two vote, we're not gonna be awarded the program. We're spinning our wheels for the next two months and will be denied. If we don't have a five-o vote at that time.
Okay, what, what do you mean by that?
That, that's, that's not.
He needs full support of the board and he's not gonna put his total hundred percent effort into it or the.
That's an opinion. I don't disagree with it, but that's not a criteria.
Phil is our EMS director and I. You know, for better or for worse, that's where we're at. I, I don't know. I can't, I can't force the program to.
The vote didn't pass, Carter, so we'll need to have a, either drop it or move on with the vote to pass it. We're not gonna have a discussion without a motion on the floor.
It passed to, to.
It's that.
To pre-app, to pre-apply.
No, your motion was to not apply. We need to have a motion to apply.
In, in regards to who would handle this, I would feel.
On the floor, we did enough discussion without motion.
I, I would make a motion to fill out the pre-application and direct the EMS board. To look into this. This should be a topic that is in their wheelhouse. That's the purpose of that board. And it doesn't have to be on Phil's responsibility. That board is put there for a reason.
So what is your motion? All that or what is your motion?
My motion is to fill out the pre-application and direct the EMS board to work on this topic.
Is there a second? Kyle's motion.
I'll second.
Who's that? Whacker?
Yes.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
What is the EMS board going to do with, with it if we approve it?
Um, in general, it would be direction for them to do research. Or I guess that can be up to direction by the board.
Research is fine, but.
Research as far as the program itself, um, any. Any details of that as far as putting together, like the rubric has things that are outlined for the proposal. Could be working on putting the proposal together, figuring out who, who could administer it, if that's something we can hire someone for. All, all, putting the pieces of the puzzle together, I guess. I don't, I don't have specifics in mind, but.
I'm looking at the board and we don't have full support of the board, nor do we have support from either of our emergencies service directors. And I, I just, I don't think we can, I, I, I love the program. I, I just don't think we can force it to succeed. So I.
I'll call through the vote.
Um, can I clarify before we do vote? Who's gonna fill out the pre-app?
I can if needed.
So.
Go ahead, Roger.
What authority do you have to fill it out from the county? Do we have to have that in the motion that we're gonna give you authority to fill it out?
That is in the motion.
It says for EMS, if it doesn't say for Kyle Stecker.
I, I put that in there.
You put Kyle Stecker? Okay, we're gonna clarify that.
And any, just it buys us two months. It does not cost us anything except time, which I'm willing to put into it. It gives us the ability to answer these questions.
Why don't you read the motion back now so that we know what we're talking about?
Um, motion by Stecker, second by Whacker, for Kyle Stecker to fill out the pre-application for a rural EMS pilot program. And direct the EMS board to look into the project.
So to clarify the motion myself. Kyle would fill out the pre-application. It would then go to the EMS advisory board at their next meeting. They would look into it. If someone is found to run the program. Then we move forward. If someone is not able to boot, to run the program, then we would deny it.
All, all of those.
The state approves ours, because there's other counties that are doing the same application.
Yeah.
So this is not a given that this is gonna happen.
All, all of those decisions on how that would act, like if someone was to be hired.
So there are a number of counties applying for this.
Correct.
Oh, that I was not aware of.
There's a number of counties applying.
We, we, I haven't, I haven't been told the number, but it is available.
Well, how would you know until the county's?
Exa- exactly, but that's, the pre-application narrows the field from all the counties it was presented to down to the ones that are interested.
Well, I don't think anybody's changing their mind. Let's have a vote on the motion.
So I'd like, can I say one thing before you vote?
Yes.
You know, Kyle's, Kyle's, when I brought up the point that the, we don't have full board support, government's not gonna pick us to have the program here because he's got. Comment back to me was, that's my opinion. I just want you to know that's not my opinion. That is a direct words from Lieutenant Governor Greg when we had the conference call with him. Last week. So if you guys wanna proceed with this, with this pre-application. And and research for two months. We better, we should have a five-o vote from the board and have full support from everybody, because if we don't, we're gonna spin our wheel for two months and waste it. A whole lot of people.
Exact same thing.
So if you wanna proceed with this, let's have a five-o vote. I'll support it, but I'm not gonna put a bunch of time into it. If you don't wanna proceed with it, unless five-o, no.
Everybody understands the motion.
And I think it's.
Kyle, you've talked enough on this today to kill a horse. Jack, uh, call, do the roll call vote.
Plath?
No.
Nah? Whacker?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jarks?
No. Three, two. Motion fails. Our next agenda item is to change some of committee appointments that were made from January third to.
I put this on because I was gone when this happened. And again, this is going against our protocol as a board, our, our. Kind of rules we've followed for the last eighteen years I've been on this board. These committee of, of appointments are done at our January meeting, the very first meeting of the new year. We go through all the committees and talk, people ask which committees they wanna be on and then it's a, and then. That those committees put on. Then all of a sudden I find out that for some reason, somebody uh came along and took Mr. Jarks off of the committee. That he was on and he never requested to be removed from that committee. And uh this doesn't follow protocol at all. I don't know how this happened or why it happened. But this is not the way we operate as a county. It's never happened this way. And I, I just wanna have some clarification on, on how this, this kind of a. Going against the grain of our normal policy and, and uh way of doing business happened.
Did, did, did you review the meeting video?
No, I talked to Roger.
Oh, I did, I did pose that.
And Roger did not request to be removed from the, from uh any boards.
I did pose that very question when we discussed that is if it was. If it was able for us to do, if we were able to do that at later time from when we, and Roger did say, yes, we were. So I, I.
Can.
Yeah, that.
But you, but like I said, this is not, never happened in eighteen years.
Just to summarize, the reason it was put on the agenda is because when the three of us were at new officer school. The emergency management um code section was discussed very specifically. And with how, how that presentation went. I thought of the decision we had made on the third to have two members on that board. And in the code, you can't have two representatives of the supervisors on EMA. So there needed to be a clarification of the primary delegate and the alternate representative. So that clarification was made while we were having discussions on that. Other things changed. But the initial meeting, I had talked about being on EMS as well. And it did not make it in the notes or whatever, for whatever reason. That's not an issue, but if you wanna go back and look at things that were discussed, it was discussed. Um, there was other things that Roger brought up with other boards that fit together better. So we made some other changes as well, but it's well within the authority to make those changes. And the reason it was put on the agenda was a legal re- reason, so.
Legal reason of what?
The code.
EMA code.
He, he doesn't apply. We can't have two members on, on of the supervisor, but.
I started.
You can have an alternate.
We can have an alternate.
But they don't, they don't have a cover at the same time.
We were both listening.
Just like the city, you can have two people there.
An and, correct. You can't have an and, and that's how it was listed was.
Shouldn't it just been clarified that it's an alt, as a, as a shepherd?
That's, that's what we did.
No, it's not. You took him off of the board and you put yourself on.
Well, and my other, my other point is you guys all discussed it at the meeting in Des Moines, I heard.
Right.
Together, that was kind of illegal. Yeah, that's what I was told.
By who?
I'm not gonna say it, 'cause you don't say it, so I don't have to either.
I was told the same thing that you guys talked about.
Yes, I don't remember all that discussion about that.
No.
We didn't discuss as to what decisions. We discussed that the code stated that we could not have two people delegated. We could have one delegate, one alternate. We, that was what was discussed.
Roger was a delegate and then somebody took it upon themselves to, to have a vote to, to take him off of a board. That he had not requested to be removed from.
We, we discussed having it on the agenda down in Des Moines because of what was presented. We did not discuss anything.
Roger ever request to be removed from that board?
That's not the ultimate deciding factor.
It is because we, we follow protocol. What we do in this county, Kyle, is that at the January meeting, we go through all those committees. We talk about the committees, we go around and say, would you like to be on? Yes, I'd be on. Okay, Roger said he would be on EMS. With that's, and that's.
So did I.
Yes, as an alternate.
And it wasn't listed.
Okay, so what? We can change that part, we can change that part and make you the alternate, but Roger should still be on that board. That's what we agreed to in January and that should not come up again until next January, unless somebody says, I don't wanna be on that board anymore. I'd like to make a change. That can happen, but it only happens when the person who's on that board makes, makes, makes a request.
That's your opinion?
That's the way it's been done for eighteen years, Kyle.
So where is that in the code?
It's normal pro, that's part of, go back and look at the first of the year business. First of your business is you look at committees and you make committee assignments. And we assign those committees on, on January third and then you and whoever else decided that you wanted, that you wanted to have a vote to take somebody off the committee. That they had no, that they made no request to be removed from. That's not the way we do business here. That's not the way it's, it's, it's ever been done. And, and that is something that is taking, that takes place on, on the first, the first of year business. Unless Roger requests to be removed from that, from that assignment, he should be put back on it.
I, I have no personal feelings on, you know, that we need to leave them outside as well as cards. Our, our relationship, we're, we're doing county business.
I would think my eighteen years of experience on this board should mean something.
And it does, and it does, and I respect that.
Well, it doesn't seem to be respected because all of a sudden people come along and they wanna, and they think they can do whatever they want willy-nilly. And just, that's not the way we operate. January, first year of new business, we've always made committee assignments. They're not voted on, they are assigned. People say, I wanna, oh, yes, we go around and we discuss who wants to be on this committee. And you say, yeah, I'll take that committee and then, and that's how we do it. That person is, we agree that that person is assigned that committee. We don't go two months after the fact and say, oh, I don't think so, so it should be on that committee, so let's ramrod him out of there.
And I, I agree and I don't think that's what happened. And if, just from my perspective, and I did not talk to the other supervisors to connive the, that motion. I, I was sitting here hearing the motion, okay? But I received a couple of phone calls from citizens on, that are involved on the EMS board. Suggesting that very thing and when I heard the motion, I thought, well, okay, that's fine. And so that's another. The change that we made. And so that's, I, I was going based on people that talked to me and the motion was made of it. And it wasn't, I guess it wasn't a big argumentative deal when it was done and so we went ahead with it. I don't, I don't know. The other point of this is, is the committee appointments are a board decision. That was a decision that was made by the board. By policy that is.
Right.
Exactly, so.
Beginning of the year.
Right, but things can be revisited and.
You don't, you don't ramrod somebody out of a, out of. Did he request to be removed from EMS board?
No, but was it, was it a decision made by the board?
I wasn't here.
Right.
Guess what? There's decisions made when I'm not here too.
Why is that not taken to the EMS advisory board?
Right. That was never asked the EMS advisory board, should Roger Jarks be removed?
How, how about at the next meeting before we, before we go and, and change things again? While at the next EMS advisory board meeting, bring that up and then change if needed. I, that's what it is.
I, no, I think we should do this today. Rod, that should be, if you wanna talk about, that's fine, but Roger should be reassigned to that board. Because he was put on at the January third meeting and he did not make a request to be removed.
So I, I didn't make a request to be removed before either.
Removed what?
From the EMS board.
You weren't on it.
You were, you were never on it. You were always the alternate, you said.
Well, he was, he's talking about the committee that we had before.
Back, yeah.
Planning committee, that was two years before that.
No, there's, there's a lot more history than you're incorporating into your presentation.
History, 'cause I don't know any of it.
What?
I don't know any of the history that you're talking about.
Well, do you wanna go back to when it was on the agenda to move, remove me off the EMS board back in twenty twenty? Or whenever it was, we can, I can find that agenda item. That was, that was middle of the year too.
We, we, we dissolved the board.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, we did.
Show me in the minutes, 'cause that never happened. But that, that came up middle of the year and you seemed to be perfectly fine with it at that point in time. 'Cause it, 'cause it fit your desired goal.
I don't know. I'm just talking about what's going on here today. And Roger did not make the request to be removed from that, from that committee or that board assignment.
Do you want me to go back and find when that was discussed?
I don't care what happened back then. This is, we're talking about.
You were on the board. You should care. Consistency, right?
That's not gonna change. We're not talking about that. We're talking about this. That, what happened back then doesn't, it doesn't, we're not gonna, we can't change that. It's done. That, that advisory board was dissolved anyway.
No, it wasn't.
It was dissolved.
Show me in the minutes, 'cause it wasn't. It's never dissolved. There was never action taken.
I'm gonna, I'm making the request that we go back to January third, Roger, we re, we put on it on the. Uh EMS board as it was pre-designated back in January. And, and if the EMS board makes a decision or whatever, makes a request, or Roger makes a request to be removed, that's a different item. But Roger did not make that request and uh it's just, that's not how we do business here as a board.
It's never been done that way.
Can I just comment quick? Kyle's gonna make. Do the. For the last motion. If he's not on the board, he can't do that, so that would affect the last.
Free application?
Free application that we just moved on.
That failed.
Failed.
Yeah, it failed, so, okay, yeah, it did, yeah. Confusing today.
I don't think we need a motion on it or a vote on it. It's just, that was all decided on January third. And, and he was, he was pushed out without his request and there's, and there's no valid reason for him to be removed from that board. But he didn't request it.
Mr. Whack, Mr. Whacker, are you along, uh, do you? In agreement that, uh, with Jack or you in agreement with Casey? In agreement that with Jack, or you in agreement with Casey before we make any more?
Casey's not here.
Or Plack, sorry, I'm getting, there's too much arguing today.
I say that we don't make any more changes this year, we're two months into a, it was a board decision that happened then. And if it needs to be changed again, it'll be a board decision, there would need to be a motion, so if you're not making a motion, then we need to keep it the same.
Carter, you for changing anything?
I, I, I'm not. I I don't see why we need to change, but I I understand the concern, I think, I think it probably is the best policy to. To stick with the board assignments that are decided, but I, it's, we're flexible on that too, so I, um.
At any time, you can request it to be to to change your board assignment if you want it, but but it's not, but it's not.
In in the past, we had people actually had to write a letter to the board to get off the.
Requesting for the, that's why we.
I imagine probably most of the time that the the committee is that people don't wanna be on, or are those that probably no one would want to be on, but I I don't know.
Oh, but that's, that was in the past, and that's where Jack's coming from, in order to take somebody off the board, they had to be request with a letter to be taken off the board.
I'd I'd say let's just move on, because I don't know that for the discussion on it or argumentation, it's gonna be really good of the county.
Well, if I if I have to do it, then if you if you guys request, I'm gonna make the motion that we go back to the January third uh committee assignments as they were done in January third. Cause it should never been changed, and Roger Jarks did not make a request to be removed from that committee.
There was multiple things that was changed there. It it wasn't one item that got changed.
Who else got changed?
I changed to an alternate of the committee, I think that was my only change.
Did you ask him to that?
I did not.
That was based on the discussion we had in the boardroom, and it was a board decision.
I was fine with it.
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's if you if you made a request.
That was not the only change we made today, and that is, I wasn't thinking about that, and Josh changed a couple things.
And and we clear, we clarified the delegate and alternate for EMA, I mean, there's, there's multiple things that happened that in that decision.
I have a motion and a second on the floor.
There's no second.
Oh, I'll second it. We gotta have discussion, we're doing things illegally today, all day long. I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
Just the fact that you did not make the request to be removed from that board, that was done on January third, and it's going against all protocol that's taken place for eighteen years I've been on this board.
I I don't believe that's a legal requirement, and if it is, I would like you to show me.
It's not legal, it's how it's always been done, Kyle.
Well, I was.
Kyle, we're done arguing about it, and I'm knocking off a while today, you're. Postponing this meeting over and over again. I have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
No.
Roll call.
Okay, call it, roll.
Plack?
Yes.
Math?
No.
Wachter?
No.
Stecker?
No.
Jerks?
Yes, motion failed, three to two. Next, we have an agreement with Snyder and Associates.
I sent you an email yesterday that they have requested to be.
Right.
Um, postponed until March fourteenth, um, some stuff came up and they're unable to.
Next.
Um, the longevity, so how this has come up, um, is longevity was in the union contracts. Well, now we only have a secondary road union, there is no longevity clause or authorization in our county handbook or anywhere else. So in order to pay longevity, you guys either need to add it somewhere, have a policy added to the handbook, or otherwise get rid of it.
So that longevity was on the secondary roads, right?
Secondary roads, sheriff's office.
And that was part of our.
No, it was on the sheriff's office, and they no longer have a union.
Okay, so. This is the longevity dealing with just the secondary roads or?
No, that, we can't touch that, cause that's.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was asking, but so this is the longevity with the sheriff's office.
Yeah. And the courthouse, cause they don't.
All the courthouse employees.
So it's it's everyone except secondary roads?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and we're deciding whether to.
Well, I, we don't.
To do it or not to do it, we can't do it without a motion.
You don't necess. You don't necessarily have to decide today, it's it's um to let you know that. That we have nothing in writing, so we, if we, when we get audited, that will be an issue that we're paying someone that's not approved.
Okay.
Are we current, we're not currently, yeah, we are currently, yeah, yes, yeah.
We are currently, we are making.
So is it something that needs to be in the handbook?
Or is it something that needs to be in that agreement that we had with the bargaining?
No, we have to make a motion first to do it, and then you can put it in.
Well, I I was asking because we could put it in the motion as to where it needs to go, or do we just make the motion and then that gets handled by Donna?
No, you guys will have to decide how you're gonna handle it.
Okay.
So to to keep things um same for the employees in that regard, we would need a motion to. Continue doing longevity and add it to the handbook as clarification?
Yes.
Okay.
And just so you know, longevity is a pain in the butt. It's not gonna hurt my feelings if you get rid of it, just because of the way it's figured, so if somebody gets a raise, you have to subtract the longevity off. Um, and then do the raise, and then add the longevity back on, so all of our raises have to be hand figured, because it's not something we can plug into the.
This has nothing, and we also have a step program, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So. I would move to. Not continue longevity as we discussed in prior meetings.
Sure. Do I have a second to this motion? I'll second this motion, so we have discussion.
Do we know how this would affect employees, like dollar wise?
Um, less, most about a hundred dollars a year, some maybe to two hundred dollars a year, but that that would be max.
So not really worth the paperwork?
No.
From what I hear, well, listen, does that part, from what I hear now, it takes longer time than what it paid out.
It does, and and so I need to clarify what you're saying, are you saying not to give longevity in the future, or are you saying. Take away the longevity they already have in addition to.
Should, we probably should have an effective date.
I would need, you know.
Well, let's clarify that in the motion.
Yeah.
Are you saying in your motion to take away the longevity that's been done in the past, or from today forward?
From from today forward.
From today forward, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not too, yeah, yeah, so thank you.
I I I know the motion has been made in that regard, I would, in discussion, I would request you amend that and do it at the fiscal year, so.
I was, I was obviously just about to make a comment.
So there's, so there's, there's a clear break, and you have time to plan for that, because I mean, if you do it on February twenty eighth, you're in the.
Fiscal year, there you go. Yep.
Is that all right, Carter?
So the motion is to uh cease longevity at at the next fiscal year, July first or whenever that's.
You you would amend your.
July first, okay, I I will concede can, uh consent to seconding that motion.
Okay.
Now, more discussion, is there any?
I guess if it's, as as I asked question, if it's minimal impact, I guess, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Are you tired of roll call votes yet?
No.
Do another one?
Plack?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Plack?
No.
Fourth one. Oh, my favorite subject. Tiff difference.
Um, so we have started the process of redoing our evaluations, which Christine's been working very hard at, she needs a huge. Yeah, she needs a huge, huge thank you for doing this process all over again.
Thanks.
Um, I finished our tiffs, because our evaluations are a little bit lower, it did affect our tiff um by a little bit, so we have to reapprove this, um.
Do you have to have the number difference?
Um. No, but I.
The number difference.
Well, she said it affected the tiff amount, so is that what you're saying, it's affected the amount?
Yeah, not, it's not gonna be a huge difference.
Okay, well, and I I can look at it.
They're different every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're never the same.
But this is, this is a change because that's.
This is because of the, the law, yeah, um, no, but I could.
Right.
Wasn't it, wasn't it two percent?
The assessed value before.
One point eight.
So the tiff will be different.
Yeah.
If you, if you, when they change the assessed value, it changes the tiff.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause the percent, it's that percentage.
The the change was one point eight percent from in the law, so that's potentially.
Okay. Has to be the same for the tiff.
No, it won't be exactly one point eight percent, but, but.
No. Oh, okay.
That's a piece of a, piece of the factors.
Okay.
So the money that goes back to Gold Eagle will be different, because the assessed value is different, so the money you flex is different, does that make sense to you?
It's it's just a few hundred dollars, I would, I would guess, so, I mean, I have the amounts, I can look them up.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'll come later.
Okay.
You get an education on tiffs.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would move to approve.
One second.
Second by Stecker, any more discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Plack?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
I got ahead of me.
Sorry, I don't know how I did that.
Evidently, you're Stecker now.
Sorry.
No, we've killed enough to answer that.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought I said it wrong, oh.
No, you you did, you said it right, I was just way ahead of you.
Do we, do we have more, I just saw the one, do we have the others?
That's the only one I had to sign.
Okay.
You sign the other one.
Which one was that?
The other handwritten, sorry, I just got to it now.
We, yeah, we'll probably wanna take a break before we do that, so then.
Okay, I got, I'll just go down to everything.
We should have three handwritten ones.
Yeah, I think I gave you three, right?
Did you?
Yeah, Kyle's signing the second.
Okay.
Gather, just on the back page, just find a open spot. Should've kept it open for you. There we go.
That's the tiff.
What's this one?
That's the tiff.
I assigned this back page.
Yeah.
We decided to put in my name or something there.
Okay, I said, yeah.
Can we, can we take a break?
Yeah, it's about time.
Yeah, um.
I have to finish the rest of the work.
Yeah.
If we, if we postpone all the engineer stuff, we could go to do like ten minutes and come back at nine forty-five for that call, and drainage, I guess, engineer and drainage.
So what about you?
Push all that back later, probably. Um, drainage all the way up to the engineers, we're up here, so all this, if we postpone all that.
Till till after. Nine forty-five?
Yeah, and we'll probably have to do it after the public hearing for sixty.
Well, their meeting, their meeting has it at nine forty-five, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have the teleconference with Winnebago, and then sixty sub four, and then we'll come back.
I thought you might postpone that.
No, we're gonna do a break now, and then we'll go into the meeting with Winnebago.
Did we have, we're done with the.